Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Wednesday, July 5th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for July 5th, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
Thank you. And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then City staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone this evening who would like to remove any of the consent items for discussion? I see no one here. Do we have anyone virtually?
No one virtually.
Okay. All right. Back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and dispose of the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Yeah, a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
The motion passes 6-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing, and we have two. First is resolution saying a public hearing on a proposed development agreement between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and 799 Main LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement for July 17th, 2023. And second is John F. Kennedy Road and West 32nd Street Intersection Improvement Project, also for July 17th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have applicant review for the Transit Advisory Board.
Okay, so we have one three-year term through July 30th, 2026, and one applicant, Greg Orwall. Do we have anyone present this evening to speak to us about this application? Yeah, come on up, Greg.
Good evening, folks. Greg Orwall, 2635 West 32nd. And I've just finished, or just finishing my first three-year term on the Transit Advisory Commission, working with Brian and staff there. And I'm finding it stimulating, to say the least. I mean, so many things coming down the pike that are so important. In my role as Executive Director of DoRide, we're engaged, obviously, in transportation for seniors 65 and older. And we partner with Juul and with Minibus, and we fill a lot of those gaps that just don't work with a, you know, a more fixed route type of a system. And inversely, we are able too to communicate back with them, with folks that we're serving that maybe could be better served or served more adequately in another way. And I'm also found that, as much as I understood prior to that, transportation issues, my 30 years prior to DoRide, I ran the Colts Drum Corps, which is nothing but transportation for 100 days every summer. But I'm finding even more insight and perspective for me about how important transportation is for folks in any city. And also, I'm finding how well-done transportation is in Dubuque relative to a lot of municipalities our size or even larger. And more and more, we hear from folks that want to know how we do it here. So given that, the next three years would be critical times for a lot of major direction-setting decision points we have to have at Juul, you know, the EV vehicles and all of that, the parking study, the transit study in general, all of those things coming down the pike that I think are going to be well-represented and well-served by folks that are engaged in the process and also have some experience. Now, given that, I moved here in the September of 1984 to take on the Colts Drum Corps. Now, according to the natives, that makes me still a visitor. I understand that. But I have been here to see all this tremendous development and growth and synergy that's taken place in Dubuque, and I'm very proud to be a very small part of it. So, questions?
You get that application to us, we can probably sign off and make you a Dubuqueer.
You think? Who do I send that to?
I'm actually coming up with a new definition. It's two hours. That's all it is. You call yourself a Dubuqueer for two hours, you're a Dubuqueer, so.
All right, well, those rules have changed then.
Welcome again. Well, thank you so much, Greg. We really appreciate you being here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then City staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is resolution of adoption for the proposed Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Krena, please.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the resolution approving the urban renewal plan for Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area. The proposed plan will provide for the continued use of tools that encourage investment and development activities in the area and support revitalization within the area and the community at large. The primary goal of the plan is to stimulate through public involvement and commitment private investment in new housing and residential development. This proposed area would result in improved roads and utilities in the area, as well as funding to assist with LMI, low and moderate income, family housing anywhere within the city. Over the life of the area, it is projected to generate approximately $6,981,771 in increment, with $2,660,055 going to affordable housing throughout the community, and $4,321,716 going to improvements in the area. However, the plan allows for a greater contribution towards infrastructure or affordable housing in the event the area would produce more increment than currently anticipated. The City Manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Krena. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council adopt the resolution approving the urban renewal plan for the Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? I see no one. Do we have anyone virtually?
No one virtually.
All right, thank you very much. Back to the table then for any discussion. Jill, I do have a question on this one. So, sorry to make you come on up, but just for clarity's sake, we just did another, you know, we approved a development agreement, there were some tax increment financing that we talked about in the last meeting we had. How does this fit with that? I just want to make sure that that's clear and there's clarity around that, so we're all on the same page.
Sure, thanks. Jill Connors, Economic Development Director here at the city. At the last meeting, the City Council approved a development agreement with the developer that provides for incentives, and those incentives get created thanks to the creation of this urban renewal plan. And then later in this meeting, there will also be an ordinance that we're requesting be passed, so the urban renewal area allows us to reimburse costs, eligible costs, that are incurred in the area. The ordinance allows us to actually collect those, that increment.
Got it.
So they're all tied together.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I think that's, it can easily be misunderstood, I think, in some way, so I really appreciate that. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Russell.
Jill, as long as you're at the podium. I know we talked about this in our work session recently, but for those that might be listening, can you remind us how, at the end of the TIF timeframe, how this benefits the entire community once that project is complete?
Sure. The increment is collected as the development goes along, and so that is collected, 38.1% is shaved off the top, and that goes into programming and capital projects that benefit low-to-moderate-income households here in the city. The remainder is available to reimburse for eligible costs, which in this case can include public roads, some infrastructure utilities, et cetera, and there's a list provided that remaining 62% can be used to reimburse up to actual expenditures by the developer. So once that obligation has been met, then the remaining is available to the city. And I don't know if Krena has any clarification on that.
I think you should capture it quite well, but the increment that's generated over time, the base that is set, the city and the taxing bodies continue to receive that same amount throughout that timeframe. It's only the increase which we capture for that timeframe where the increment is generated, and at the end, all of the revenue that would go to the taxing bodies, not just the city, then is distributed to all of the taxing bodies.
At the end of the 10 years. Yep.
Thanks for reminding us of how that works.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to expand on that response a little bit. So, one of the reasons the school district has always been in support of the city using this type of tool is because anybody who lives there that has children, they're going to go to the schools in our system, and that, of course, benefits our system and their funding streams. But also, besides the property tax that people pay, we have to remember that all those people, they go to restaurants, they shop in stores, they buy cars, they buy fuel, they do all kinds of things that recycles money within the City of Dubuque. And if they don't happen to be a new resident to our area, so if it's not new dollars, that means they freed up some other living unit in town for them to buy this place, which somebody else then bought that living unit or rented it, whatever it happened to be. So it's, there's a lot of economic benefit to the community in general, to having more housing.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Jill, I have one more question, actually. So on your memo, it says, there's a, in the background section, there's a sentence that says, "The infrastructure improvements, including but limited to the installation of fiber conduit and vaults," and something like that. Is that, is that true or is that a misprint? Because I was curious if it was limited to or not limited.
Not limited to.
It should say not limited to.
Correct.
That's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to double-check on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's, so it is not just limited to the things that are listed within that background section, it includes those things and could include others.
Right.
Okay. That helps, thank you. All right. Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it. Well, the motion is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
That motion passes 6-0.
Public hearing number two is voluntary annexation request. City of Dubuque Engineering Department applicant and the Iowa Department of Transportation property owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Wethel. Krena, please.
Planning Services Manager Wally Wernamont is recommending City Council approval of a 100% voluntary annexation request filed by the City of Dubuque Engineering Department as the applicant and the Iowa Department of Transportation as the property owner for approximately 4.56 acres of property. The resolution, maps, and other supporting documentation are included with the agenda item. The annexation territory is comprised of public right-of-way along West Side Drive and land to the south of West Side Drive and the east of West Side Court. The submitted annexation request is to allow the city to work with the Iowa Department of Transportation to dispose of excess property that was acquired as part of the development of the southwest arterial. The City Manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Krena. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approval of a 100% voluntary annexation request filed by the City of Dubuque Engineering Department as the applicant and the Iowa Department of Transportation as the property owner for approximately 4.56 acres of property. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? I see no one. Anyone virtually?
No one virtually.
Thank you. Back to the table then for discussion. Seeing none. The motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Public hearing number three is Weber Acres rezoning request.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Jones and a second by Farber. Wally, I'm guessing I'm coming to you.
That's right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wally Wernamont, Planning Services Manager. So, that annexation we just talked about just previously with the public hearing, it's actually part of this rezoning request. The Engineering Department, as mentioned before, is looking at cleaning up some Iowa DOT parcels as part of that highway, Southwest Arterio, US 52 project. And as part of that, we're looking at annexing that property, and with that annexation, if it's not rezoned at that time, it comes in as ag land, it just really doesn't make sense to have that property come in as ag land. So we're asking it to be rezoned to commercial service, which is the adjoining commercial property for future development of the site and make it more marketable as we move forward with that. And as part of an agreement with the DOT, the city is responsible for helping facilitate this process. And with this rezoning request, it went to our zoning advisory commission, we had a public hearing, we didn't notify anyone within 200 feet of the property, no one spoke in opposition to the request, and it came before the commission, and by a vote of 6 to 0, they recommend approval of the City Council for the rezoning of the property. That's all I have. Let me know if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approve a request from the City Engineering Department to rezone property located at Weber Acres, south of West Side Drive and east of West Side Court, from County M2, heavy industrial to City CS, commercial service and wholesale concurrently with annexation into the City of Dubuque. And Zoning Advisory Commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? I see no one. Anyone virtually?
No one virtually.
Thank you. Back to the table then for any discussion or questions. All right. Looks like you answered all the questions, Wally. Thank you very much for your time. So the motion is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to file a consideration and pass it to the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then City staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. I see we have public input this evening.
Good evening. Clark Slows, 2925 Burlington Street. I'd like to thank the mayor and City Council to allowing me to speak about the speed camera issue and the speed study data that was presented a few weeks back, and I'd like to thank the city engineer. I had a lengthy telephone conversation about the topic, and also, I was kind of concerned about some of the letters to the editor against speed cameras. I'll let you know upfront that I was a Jackson County engineer for 26 years, and before that, my career, you know, did speed studies and traffic studies. I support the speed cameras. The speed study data to me, at least indicates to me, that Dubuque has a speeding problem. Especially, I was shocked at the number of areas where not only 31 miles an hour over the speed limit, but 20 miles an hour over the speed limit, the number of people that are doing that. Some of the areas, almost approaching 50% of the people are speeding. I've heard some reasons for against the speeding cameras, that the fines are an economic hardship. There's a cure for that. Don't speed. There is also a question of whether or not speed cameras help improve safety. I think the, at the work session for the speed camera data, or speed study data, that there were some studies that looked at long-term effects of speed cameras. And I'm not aware of any speed studies that say speed cameras decrease safety. If you can, you know, that, for that speed study data, 22,000 speeders, let's say you reduce that by 25%, that's fewer chances of something happening out there. Interesting question for the city attorney's office. If there is a speeding problem, and the City of Dubuque does know about it, and they decide to do nothing about it, if something happens out there where someone's coming up to a stoplight, slows down for that yellow light, but the speeder behind them is not paying attention, you know, you have that rear-end accident, is the city had increased liability because they knew there were problems and decided to do nothing? One thing, you know, the difference between, you know, a speed, speed camera and, you know, officer, actual officer out there writing the ticket, the speed camera doesn't count against your driver's license, while the ticket that that officer writes, he does count against your license. Now, I don't know if a speed camera ticket, if you're going over 25 miles an hour over the speed limit, would, you know, could be a possible suspension, but if an officer does that, you could possibly be suspended license on that. I see no reason to at least, you know, further, you know, look at where are the areas that we should have the speed cameras. I think we need them. You know, one editorial or letter to the editor complaining that it gave Dubuque a bad reputation. Well, I've traveled various regions around the country, and the fact that they have a speed camera, does that stop me from going to their area for a vacation? No. It just means I got to be, you know, I got to watch what I'm doing, I got to pay attention when I drive. With today's, if you got, you know, the Garmin GPS systems or even your phone, Google, Google Maps provides, you know, navigation, warns you of speed cameras ahead. There are aids there to prevent you from speeding. I see no reason why we shouldn't have them. You know, they say it's a money grab. Well, if you have increased officer enforcement out there, could you say that's a form of a money grab for those who don't want speed cameras? The only difference is, is digital or electronic versus the human element of an officer writing that ticket. I just wanted to let you know that I support the speed cameras. I send emails to the City Council saying that I do support them. I would even support, you know, stoplight cameras on that, but that's a different topic. And I know I talked to the city engineer about better cameras for license plate identification. I support that. It's, it's another law enforcement aid. We already have cameras at various locations in Dubuque. They have assisted the police force in law enforcement, and this is nothing different. So, just like to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for your comments, Clark. Any other public input this evening? I see no one else here. Do we have anyone virtual?
No one virtually.
Okay. Then we can go ahead and move on.
We'll move on to action items. Action item number one is update on Water and Resource Recovery Center odor abatement efforts.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file.
Second.
Got a motion by Farber, second by Jones. Krena, please.
Water Resource and Recovery Center Manager William O'Brien is providing an update on odor abatement efforts at the Water Resource and Recovery Center.
Oh, that's it?
That's it.
All right. And then, I wasn't sure, we don't have a presentation scheduled to go with this. This is just for council discussion, correct? Okay. Back to the table then for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Just wanted to thank Willie for giving us this update, because we had asked for this when he did a presentation to us previously, so we could have a better understanding of the chemical, which is iron-based, which is really a salt compound, if you will, to help us with the processing of the sewage for the abatement of the odor that comes up from the facility. So this is just great news, and I look forward to the, to the follow-up and to seeing how it's actually working on our behalf. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I had just a couple of questions, and I'm not sure that staff present necessarily can answer them definitively, but my question was, when will we plan to begin the execution of the process that is described? And then, when would we expect to have, it refers to a summary report presentation of the findings and recommendations?
So whoever's up there in space to talk to us about this, I'll turn it over to you. Is that Mike?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Willie, you on the line tonight?
It does not look like he's on the line.
Okay. Yeah. Willie's on vacation with his family this week, so we'll, we'll get you that, a response to that question in writing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, go ahead.
Just one other comment about this summary, which is really helpful in creating, I think, a tangible plan. When I first started running for office in January of 2022, some of my first comments from constituents in Ward Four had to do with odor abatement and what our plan will be. And so, although it's delayed, and I appreciate our constituents' patience, there were things in the process that were difficult in arranging this. I think the memo goes into that a little bit. So I appreciate staff's work on it, because I know it's been in process, and it feels like it has been a stalemate, but it has not. With good effort, it has been a process ongoing. There's a comment about whether or not there may be additional funds felt necessary, and I think that it sounds as though would be in the future after we begin this process. And so I would just ask, from a perspective of expediting, as soon as we know if additional funding is needed to bring that directly to council, so that we can be quick in our addressing of the issue, and not only just wait for those recommendations, but in real time, if we know right away that there's an issue that we are going to need additional funds for, I just ask that we know about that quickly, and certainly would ask my council colleagues to favorably consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. Well, I, too, would like to say thank you to, to staff, especially to Willie and his staff, for working with this. You know, we've had a lot of input, a lot of questions from residents on this. I think Ms. Wethel and Ms. Farber in particular have been instrumental in making sure that this issue stays front and center, so thank you for that. But at the same time, it seems like we're getting closer. It, it does seem like we're actually starting to figure out what this could potentially, what the fix could potentially be, and, and I agree. I think, you know, the faster we can understand what that is and get the information from staff when we find new things out, the better in this case. So, thank you very much. All right. Well, the motion then was to receive and file. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Action item number two is tax increment ordinance for the Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Crenna, please.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approval of an ordinance attached for the Switch Homes Housing, or Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area. Tax increment financing is an important tool for economic development and will be used to assist future public and private development efforts in the Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area. The plan was reviewed by the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission on June 21st, 2023. The Long Range Planning Advisory Commission has forwarded its recommendation to the city council, affirming that the plan is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan for development. The proposed urban renewal plan for the area describes the specific use of tax increment funds, reflecting the utilization of tax rebates, the construction of public infrastructure, and other planned expenditures. The primary goal of the plan is to stimulate through public involvement and commitment, private investment in new housing and residential development, as defined by Iowa Code Section 403.17, sub-12. This proposed area would result in improved roads and utilities in the area, as well as funding to assist with low-moderate-income-family housing anywhere within the city. With the 10-year life of this area, it is projected to generate approximately $6,981,771 in increment, with $2,660,055 going to affordable housing throughout the community, and $4,321,716 going towards improvements in the area. However, the plan allows for a greater contribution toward infrastructure or affordable housing in the event the area would produce more increment than currently anticipated. The city manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Crenna. Any discussion? Already had part of it earlier, the earlier item. My questions were answered. Okay. I'm seeing none, so the motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Action item number three is fiscal year 2024 Arts and Culture Operating Support Grant Funding Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Farber. Crenna, please.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council concurrence with the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission recommendation to fund the fiscal year 2024 operating support grant applications as follows. Bell Tower Theater, $15,943. Colts Youth Organization, $22,343. Creative Adventure Lab, $19,859. Dubuque Arboretum and Botanical Gardens, $21,707. Dubuque Area Arts Collective, $336. Dubuque Arts Council, $3,245. Dubuque Chapter of S-P-E-B-S-Q-S-A slash Music Men Barber Shop Chorus, $395. Dubuque Corral, $1,733. Dubuque County Fine Arts Society, $12,107. Dubuque County Historical Society, $21,349. Dubuque Museum of Art, $21,846. Dubuque Symphony Orchestra, $22,343. Fly-by-Night Productions, $926. Heritage Works, $10,511. Julian Dubuque International Film Festival, $15,029. Key City Creative Center, $4,427. Multicultural Family Center, $3,911. Northeast Iowa School of Music, $12,856. Rising Star Theater Company, $2,954. The Grand Opera House, $20,356. And Voices Productions, $15,824. For a total fiscal year 2024 operating support funds to be awarded, $250,000. The city manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Crenna. Any discussion? Seeing none. I'm, I have to tell you, I'm just excited that we have the funds available to, to fund this much. I noticed, one of the things I noted was the fact that the requests were $358,000. We always get more requests than we are able to fund, but the fact that we can do 250,000 of that is, is just fantastic news. I mean, it really is, it's great for the arts in this community. It's a huge piece of who we are here in Dubuque, and what really brings people to town in many different ways, from both a resident and tourist standpoint. So I'm really excited to see this. Thank you very much for your work, John, for all the, all the staff, and, and also to the, the commission for their work on this, because I know that they had to have quite a bit of discussion to make this work and make sure that they were picking the right option to do it, so. All right. Well, with that said, motion is to receive and file and approve the recommendation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Action item number four is fiscal year 2024 Arts and Culture Special Projects Grant Funding Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Jones. Crenna, please.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council concurrence with the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission recommendation to fund the fiscal year 2024 special projects grant applications as follows. $8,000 to the Dubuque County Historical Society for "We Are Where We Live: How Our Environments Shape Community" 20th Anniversary Exhibit Project. $6,940 to the Dubuque Symphony Orchestra for a Patriotic Celebration of Veterans Day Concert Project. $6,740 to the Dubuque Arts Council for the Gareth Johnson and the Evolution Band Project. $6,340 to Voices Productions for Voices Studios Artist in Residence Program Project. $940 to the Masterpiece Literary Center for Prescott Elementary School Writing Program 2023-2024 Project. $6,040 to the Dubuque Museum of Art for Arts Trek Middle School Expansion Pilot Project. And the above outlines a total of $35,000 in recommended funding. The FY 2024 Special Projects Funding Cycle runs from July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, and the projects will be implemented prior to June 30, 2024, with final reports due by August 31, 2024. The city manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Crenna. Any discussion? Well, then I will simply reiterate my excitement that we are able to continue to fund projects like this. This is a, it is great. I mean, I'm excited to see all this stuff come to, actually come to be now that they have some funding to work with, so. Okay. Motion is to receive and file and approve the recommendation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Action item number five is fiscal year 2024 Purchase of Services Grant Recommendations and Agreements.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Farber. Crenna, please.
Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger is recommending city council approve the attached purchase of services grant agreements with the recommended organizations and authorize the mayor to execute the agreements on behalf of the city. The Community Development Advisory Commission recommends funding for the following organizations: Crescent Community Health Center, Diabetic Wound Care, Saving Lives and Limbs of Vulnerable Citizens, $10,000. Four Mounds Foundation, Build Dubuque Home Modification, $25,000. Four Oaks Family and Children's Services, Supporting Essential Services at 15th Street Apartments, $10,000. Multicultural Family Center, STEP, Summer Teen Empowerment Program, $12,000. Riverview Center, Sexual Assault and Abuse Crisis Intervention and Response Program, $25,000. And St. Mark Youth Enrichment After School Programming, $18,000. The city manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Crenna. Seeing none. All right. Is this, are these the, the only purchase of services grant recommendations that we receive? I can never remember this, and I apologize for that, but I'm just curious, Mike, if this, do we get another round of these coming, or is this what we get for, for this coming year?
Mr. Mayor, this is Alexis Steger, Housing and Community Development Director.
Hey, Alexis.
Hi. I can answer that question for you. So, this is the only round of purchase of services that we do for the fiscal year 2024. We do them all at once, and then we give those organizations an entire year to use that funding.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Well, I'm, once again, I always appreciate that we have partners like this in the community to be able to do some of the important work, because the city government can't do it all. So it's really important that we are able to, to do this and continue to move this forward on an annual basis, so. Thank you for your work for it. Mike, did you have anything to add? I thought I heard your voice jump in there.
No, I was just asking for help to answer.
All right. Excellent. Well, the motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Action item number six is proceedings to direct advertisement for sale of $6,250,000 taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2023A. Approval of the preliminary official statement and approval of electronic bidding procedures.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I ask to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Wethel, second by Farber. Crenna, please.
Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson recommends city council approval of the suggested proceedings for approving the advertisement for sale, preliminary official statement, and electronic bidding procedures for the $6,250,000 taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2023A. The $6,250,000 taxable Series 2023A bonds will provide $193,000 for buildout of second floor of the Old Engine House, $176,000 for HVAC replacement at Fire Headquarters at 11 West 9th Street, $4,300,000 for Dubuque Ice Center settling remediation and building improvements, $600,000 for design of the Five Flags renovation, $162,000 for costs related to the property acquisition for a new downtown parking ramp, $245,000 for parking ramp major maintenance repairs, and $574,000 for issuance fees and contingency for fluctuations in the bond market for interest rates. The $7,55,000 taxable Series 2022B bonds will provide $550,000 for River Dock expansion, $803,000 for property acquisition for a new downtown parking ramp, $5,200,000 for Weber property purchase in Dubuque Industrial Center, and $502,000 for issuance fees and contingency for fluctuation in the bond market for interest rates. Although the city is selling general obligation bonds to support the projects, repayment of the debt will be local option sales tax, sanitary sewer fund, Dubuque Industrial Center tax increment financing, and Greater Downtown tax increment financing. Although the city is selling... Oh, that's a repeat. The bond sale will be held on July 17, 2023. A letter from attorneys John Danos and David Grosskloss detailing information on the bond advertisement is enclosed. A draft copy of the preliminary official statement prepared by Dorsey &amp; Whitney LLP and city staff is enclosed. Careful review of the draft official statement by appropriate city staff and members of the city council is an important step in the offering of the bonds for sale to the public. The U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission has stated that issuers are primarily responsible for the content of their disclosure documents and may be held liable under the federal securities laws for misleading disclosure. In several recent enforcement proceedings, the commission has made clear that it expects public officials to generally review disclosure documents in light of their unique knowledge and perspectives on the issuer and its financial circumstances, or else to ensure that appropriate procedures are in place to provide the necessary review. Rule 15(c)(12) of the commission requires prospective purchasers of the bonds to obtain and review an official statement that has been deemed final by the city prior to submitting a bid to purchase the bonds. For this purpose, the official statement may omit certain information that is dependent upon the pricing of the issue, such as interest rate, bond maturities, and redemption features, but should otherwise be accurate and complete. The city manager concurs with that recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval, and I realize that the repeat was for Series A and Series B. The sources of funding are very similar, so there's some overlap, but they're not exactly the same. Apologies.
That's all right. Thank you, Crenna. All right. Discussion, questions? I'll just note that this particular item included a lot of detailed financial information, so we had had the opportunity to review that as a city council, and I know for a fact that our finance department has done the same. Okay? Any discussion then? All right. Well, with that, we have a motion to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Action item number seven is Federal Transit Administration 5339 Bus and Bus Facilities Low or No Emission Grant Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Crenna, please.
Transportation Services Director Ryan Nuckey is notifying city council the jewel was awarded the fiscal year '23 FTA 5339 Bus and Bus Facilities Low or No Emission Grant. The jewel applied for the FY '23 FTA 5339 Bus and Bus Facilities Low or No Emission Grant in April, and was notified by the FTA June 21, 2023. The jewel was awarded $2,359,072 towards transitioning the jewel fleet to a zero emission bus fleet. The local match for the grant is $408,659. This amount has been included in the city's budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year '24.
Thank you, Crenna. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Congratulations, Ryan. Well done.
And woo-hoo! I mean, this is, I mean, incredibly exciting. I mean, it's, it's really incredibly exciting. This is a, this is a huge win. It's, it's a big grant for a big purpose, something we've been trying to do for a while, and it's not easy to do right now, so this is very, very good. Mr. Sprank.
I was just gonna say, it looks like two buses that we're getting, so I, I'm excited to hear quieter, quieter city buses going around our community.
Yeah, absolutely. And of course, we've had the discussion several times here at this S2, and I've been asked about this a lot, you know, just how, how is this going to work in a city like Dubuque? We've, we're working through that, figuring out how the technology is going to be able to work in a place that has many hills, has ice. This is not a problem that is unique to Dubuque. It's a problem that the United States has in many different places, but we're all trying to work out how that is going to be the case. But Ryan, go ahead.
Ryan Nuckey, Director of Transportation Services. We're very excited, very excited. We're, we're excited about the transition we're gonna take. We currently have funding for one bus already that we have been researching for about 14 months already, talking to at least a dozen cities about different manufacturers out there. Lot of manufacturers, lot of battery manufacturers out there, because there's a lot of different ways to order this. We've gotten a lot of good input, a lot of input that's scared us a lot, too, where it's, hey, don't, you know, really watch when you're buying this. So, I'm really, I can't thank Tom Cool from Public Works enough for helping out with this and going and visiting these locations.[1662.13] Within that 14 months, they've moved up to 588 kilowatts, which that allows the city to do a full day with one bus instead of changing it out midday. So this technology keeps advancing and the specs from 14 months ago to today have totally changed on the frame and structure side. So it's been a big win with our slow gradual approach. We still have to electrify the jewel, which we've worked with Liant already. They already know what we're looking at doing down there. So we're very excited. We were very excited to get the phone call saying that we received the grant and we're gonna keep slowly moving forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Farber. The question, how many charging stations will we have with this grant?
So with this grant, let me see if I get everything right. This grant, we did, we put money in for one charging station.
For both buses, for both?
Yeah, it'll have a dual system on it though. So we're looking at getting 180 kilowatt charging station. And these charging stations have dual cords on them, so as we plug the buses in, we can program them to charge between, we'll probably do 10 PM to 4 AM, so it'll be off-peak hours, so we'll have a cheaper electric bill. And then with that, that program, they'll charge one bus and then it can switch over to the second bus. So as the day starts, everything will be charged up and ready to go.
Great, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then just real quick, I'll add to, to what you just said too, because I think it's important that we talk about this as a community and everybody recognizes this. We need to take a gradual approach and we need to make sure that we're doing the research that we need to do to do this correctly. But at some point, we have to jump and be able to start doing this, because, because it is important to say that, because when we do it, it's not gonna be perfect. The technology's not gonna be perfect yet. I mean, think about how much cars advanced from the time the car, the automobile was invented until today. We can't just sit around and wait. We need to push forward because that's part of what our strategy is with climate action, but with also with making our, our system more efficient, more resilient in many ways. So we appreciate the work you're doing and I think you're doing it at exactly the right pace, so I feel good about that. But at some point, we are gonna, we are gonna be moving forward here, and I'm sure the grant dictates that. I didn't see what's the date that we have to make this purchase.
So we do have some time for these two buses, but our current bus that we have, we're down to the end of that, where we have a pretty good idea, idea which manufacturer we're looking to go forward with. A big part of this grant that's gonna help with our first grant is it has rated $120,000 for training, because not only do I have to train all my drivers on how to drive something new, we have to train the mechanics, the fire department, the police department, the public works department. I mean, there's a lot of people that are gonna have to know how to handle this bus if there is an issue, which we're hoping there's not. I mean, we're, we're hoping, so we do have a big bucket of money in here for training, which will help us move forward in the right direction.
Yeah. That's a fantastic addition too. Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
One quick question, Ryan. Do we, what other communities in Iowa have electric buses yet?
There's quite a few, actually, that's around our area that have them. We've gone to Moline, we've gone to Rockford, we were in Rockford, Illinois last week. We've, we've talked to DART in Des Moines. Iowa City has electric buses. We've talked to Duluth, Minnesota. We've talked to a lot of different locations, Kansas City. I, I spent a day in Omaha. It kind of worked well because we're doing the smart parking mobility management plan, so I could double dip on my trips. So that worked well, but just talking to the different teams gave us a lot more knowledge. And okay, they said, don't touch this, and their terrain is a lot like ours, so I understand that. And then talking to Duluth, Minnesota, I mean, they're high in the winters, like five degrees, so. They were talking about the difference voltage that you're gonna need in the kilowatts in these buses, and they said, listen, if, if you're gonna get a 440, expect to put it in the shop midday because you won't make it. And just that general knowledge that they already have from running them currently has greatly impacted our, our, our process to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate this information. I feel even better after hearing you speak tonight, so thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I'll just make the comment that this is a, we're not the first year, we're not inventing this by any means, but we're still leading. And this is what leadership is all about, is trying something new when others aren't quite ready to sometimes, and finding out that it works. Sometimes finding out that it didn't work as well as you'd hoped, but it's still leading. And that's what we're here to try and do, and this, this is absolutely the direction that the world has got to go. So I'm happy that we're, we're taking our steps and getting there. And you're gonna save a ton of hand soap because mechanics hardly ever get a chance to get dirty under these buses.
I hope that's the case.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. All right. Motion is to receive and file. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number eight is Work Session Request: State Legislation Property Tax Reform Impact on City Revenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for Monday, July 17 at 5:30 PM.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number nine is Work Session Request: State and Federal Grant Updates.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the work session on state and federal grant updates be rescheduled for Monday, October 21st at 5 o'clock PM.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank.
Also move that we receive and file the information. Apologies.
Thank you for catching that, yeah. We have, motion is to receive and file and schedule that work session on that date and time. All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number 10 is Work Session Request: Travel Dubuque.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and proceed for the August 21st meeting work session.
Second.
Got a motion by Farber, second by Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number 11 is Marshall East Video on Air Quality.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and watch the video.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Gisela, did you have anything to add before this video is on? I, I thought Mike might have mentioned that you had something. Yep. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure. Gisela Ikenjedo, Chief of Equity and Human Rights. Hello, everyone. So as you know, we had the Canadian wildfires, which didn't help with the air quality that we experienced. And we also have more than 25 different languages that are spoken in our school district. Out of those languages, the two predominantly languages are Spanish and Marshall East. As you can imagine from my looks, I do speak Spanish, but Marshall East, unfortunately, I don't. I can, well, I can say a couple of words, it's not sufficient. So what we decided to do to better make the awareness of our community was, we translated it into Spanish and put it in the social media, but we don't have really a Marshall East translator or interpreter that we can just snap out of our fingers. Therefore, we turned into our partners, the Crescent Community Health Center, and Dustin Alfred and Irene, which are both community healthcare workers, helped us and translated, actually interpret for us a live video, which is what you're about to see. What we wanted to do is to make sure that all of our communities have the same equitable message being delivered so that they know what's out there, what's going on, and they can take advantage and protect themselves and their loved ones.
Thank you very much for adding that. Well, with that, Eric, you can go ahead and roll the video, please.
Yagwe nana olivero de bugein, adain dustin ito itarabale kresi community health clinic. We ito iki chien siri de bugein ngan ngay kualaket melalego reywalakelo reyne. Illo june roho jumnyon ra langan roho raunnyon ra ar walakjoen reywa kijegu ar walakelo Canada. Imar talla daum olala ngan de bugein. Emu imeja todone koyiloe akoy menono kiyo reyne reywa imyan pulu rey. Emre ika chidobe nekechikro maaja rolo de bugein katong kechpero im kama nope enjab efakte ezmore am. Iki chien magutugogo ayukure novit reyka chidobe roo ruto roe warai nangimjin lung, lung disease. Ruto roo ar imajiro katong papra im karigala magutugogo ayukure gonnabut. Emu it nekonis perre lo yontal gaye aytagane roo te katong karigala magutugogo atarabale go reyro ngan am ney maro menono kiyo imeja todone. Imeja todone emaro nchalede ezmore na emu it unny ayir kama nope den kualaket melalego balebren melalega demene. Emu it nekonis perre novit mungo na, na warabalam nagin etterdu etter la yalgani. Reyka chidobe gwen fok imchop kama nope magutugogo reyralat. Emu it ney ewar meyes ney reyka chidobe oliverin kananga meyes goa ngan atibang paprae. Menono kiyo imeja todone taraman ngan oliver mool.
He was perfect. Well, great. Thank you very much, Gisela, for you and your team putting that together. Thank you to Dustin and Irene for doing that as well. Really important, I think, for everybody to have the same information in a way that everyone can understand it best, so really appreciate your work on it. All right. Well, the motion there was to receive and file, watch the video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll move on to council member reports.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Take a personal second to congratulate Assistant Fire Chief David Grass in his new position, since he's in the room and I can embarrass him a little bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Congratulations. Mr. Sprank.
Yeah, I just wanted to say once again, thank you to our city staff for the lovely, for the wonderful project with Comiskey Park. It has been very well used since it's been opened. I can't imagine, just, I think I've seen at least upwards of 100 people there every day since we've started, since we did that ribbon cutting. So it's just, you have to drive by and see it, just to see the amazing number of families and children that are just enjoying it, so.
That's great. That's great news. Yeah, the weather cleared up nicely. The, speaking of wildfire smoke, cleared up a little bit and it stayed hot. So it was a good day for a splash pad pretty much every day. And I don't know if, you know, we, most of us were able to make it there. It was, there have been some fun events that I've been a part of as a city council member. That one, as of right now, is the top. I mean, it was an incredible night to be able to see that. And there were some comments that it was pretty daring to put that many pairs of scissors in that many little hands, but it all worked out very well. And it was a great plan, and I love the fact that all the children got a chance to be able to be a part of cutting the ribbon. It was, it was just, it was, it was really great. We all should have been running through the splash pad though, because that was a hot night. So it was, that was a good time, but I'm glad to hear it's being well used. It is, it's a beautiful, beautiful space. Ms. Farber.
No, I was just gonna make a similar comment, but also just the fact that there were so many families and so many young, were actually people that wanted to be in the splash pad were all ages, I thought. It means everybody just had a smile on their face and they were very much appreciative of the new venue. And especially when they went to the slides and, and the texture of the terrain there, you could take your shoes off and you would still be bouncing. So I mean, it was just really very well constructed. A lot of thought, the colors were amazing. And that's just, you know, eye candy for everybody, I think, that was in attendance, and it was just so many families and so much fun. So again, thanks to the city and everything that was done to organize it, it was just really, you know, the best, so.
And I encourage everybody from Dubuque to go out and see it. I mean, this is, this is Dubuque Splash Pad. You know, this is, it, it is in Comiskey Park, and I think a lot of people are gonna rediscover Comiskey for the first time in a long time, so that'll be really great. Any other reports? Just congratulations on another successful airshow and fireworks and Fourth of July holiday this week. I think it was great. Always enjoy the airshow, so I know that the airport staff worked really hard to put that on too, so thank you very much to them. All right. Well, we have a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move the city council going to close session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to continue with professional evaluations.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that it had to be the attorney statement before we did it. Okay.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
We don't have to.
Okay. Thank you very much, Crenna.
I needed to clarify with Adrian.
Okay, all right.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. We are in closed session.